I will now call the meetings of order. And are we starting with the flags? Or are we starting with presentations?
With the pledge leader, please.
With the pledge leader, okay.
And at this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Maxwell, who is going to introduce our student pledge leader.
Where do you want to sit?
Right here for the pledge. Great.
This is one of my 170 favorite students. This is A.J. Landrigan. A.J. is a fifth grade student at Eisenhower. And he has one of the unique things about him is A.J. has been at Eisenhower for six years. That's rather unusual for a student at Eisenhower. He is the son of Jim Landrigan and Franny Landrigan and stepson to Kyle Billings. He is here tonight with his older sister Kylie Landrigan and older stepbrother Carsten Billings. A.J. is an outstanding student. His favorite subject in school is math. And they this week have been working on area and perimeter. Have it drawn and taped on the floor in the hallway. And A.J. has been out measuring and figuring and conquering different kinds of formulas. His other favorite classes are music and P.E. He is involved with our after-school Feed the Brain Club, our chess club, and the Good News Club. And when he can, he also is a part of things like woodworking, hunting, R.C., cars, video games, and building things. A.J. has been on our honor roll. This is for the third year. One of the things that he is most proud of is this last season, he shot a big buck during deer season. I now introduce A.J. Landrigan to lead us in our flag salute.
Back, please.
Present arms.
Would you please join us in for the salute to the United States' flag? Ready, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms.
Thank you, A.J. I have a certificate for you. We know you're gonna wanna hang this right above the mantle in the living room. Thank you for coming. Okay, students, spotlight.
Yes, and next I'd like to introduce Emerson Principal, Candace Wojcicki, to introduce our student reporter for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Amber. I'm Candace Wojcicki, the principal at Emerson Middle School. And I would never pass the opportunity to brag both about Emerson and our students. We have about 419 students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at Emerson. And tonight, our spotlight is on Ms. Merity. Ms. Merity is a seventh grader. She's been at Emerson, this'll be her second year. She loves art. She has the biggest smile in the world when you see her coming down the hallway. I have yet to step into a classroom where I see her. She is always on task, learning, willing to work, and try her hardest. If we all just had her attitude, we would, the world would be such a better place. So, Ms. Merity, would you like to come up?
Hi. My name is Merity Wager. I am a seventh grader at Emerson Middle School. My favorite subjects are math and art. My friends and teachers are amazing. My school is awesome. When I'm home, I like to cook with my mom. Andy like to ride my bike in my dad's shop. I like to ride the four-wheeler with my brother Sam. And I like to get my nails painted with my sister, Michelle. Sometimes my grandma takes me horseback riding. Thank you.
As you can see, Merity has a big fan club and support system. Her mom, her dad, her grandparents, former teachers and principals, all here supporting Merity. Thank you, dear.
Merity, I have a certificate for you. And thank you so much for being here. That was a great report. And I think you have a beautiful smile also.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here. Now, we have a few recognitions. Amber?
As the board knows, the, especially with Dr. Floyd's suggestion and influence, we implemented the A.B.C.D. award this year, the Above and Beyond the Call of Duty. And it is meant to specifically honor those support staff members who are always there to give 110%, who really go out of their way to make sure that that award is a great place to work and to learn. And tonight, we are going to recognize Link Setzer from Taft Elementary School for something a little bit different than you might expect for his role at Taft. And I'm gonna ask for a little help if Mrs. Elliott will come tell me. And she's got a very surprised look on her face. And now she's looking at David, so I know the message didn't get to Mrs. Setzer. But she, yes, always does a great job. And I think I'd like, it's best when you hear firsthand from the people who are really impacted. And she had a great experience with Link. Would you mind coming and joining in and sharing with us?
Well, now you don't have a choice.
Well, Link, I'm gonna thank you again. Because I got a phone call one night, on a Friday night. And you beat me there.
Yeah.
But we had a reported break-in. And I show up with the police. And the canine dog was on his way. And Link was there to meet me. And he didn't know that I would be showing up with my spouse also. So, he was very welcome sight. Because I could've been showing up alone down there. We waited on the dog. And you were very much a comfort. And you were above and beyond. And beyond that, he then fixed my window that they had come in through. And so, he went to Taft and got some... What kind of nails did you get?
Liquid nails.
Liquid nails. Aren't you glad he was there? And so, he fixed it. It's wonderful. You spent your Friday night above and beyond at Taft School.
Thank you.
And I thank you.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful dad. He spent about three hours with me that much.
Well, Link's another one that every time you see him has a big smile on his face. And always, always treats me with a lot of courtesy and respect. So, thank you, Link. We appreciate everything you do. No problem. Glad you did it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The crowd is standing. Once you come through the door, you don't even need to look over. Forgot to look over there.
Well, we have two very special guests from Enid High School with us this evening. The two students selected were the Oklahoma Foundation for Excellence Academic Allstate. And as you know, this is a very prestigious award. There are only 100 students selected throughout the state. And two of those students are from Enid High School. So, before we introduce them, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bierschmidt to tell you just a little bit about what it takes to be named an Academic Allstater.
Thank you, Amber. When, when I get to receive a letter, and I receive one just about every year, and it says, Dear Mr. Bierschmidt, it is indeed my pleasure to share with you the enclosed list of 2015 Academic Allstaters selected by the Oklahoma Foundation for Excellence. On behalf of the selection committee and our board of trustees, I offer my congratulation and commend you and your school for the outstanding academic achievements of your winning students. And that goes on to explain some of the things that it takes to get this. You first off must have a composite ACT score of at least a 30 on a national or district contracted testing, a combined SAT critical reading and math score of at least 1340 on a national or district contracted testing day, a National American Scholarship Program semifinalist, a National Achievement Scholarship Program semifinalist, a National Hispanic Scholar, excuse me, awards program semifinalist, which each one of these kids has met one of those criteria. Then, some of the things that they have to send after being nominated is a list of extracurricular and community activities, clubs, honors, and sports, and any positions or such that they may have held in some of these organizations that they served for. There were close to 600, again, nominations this year. Enid High School, I'm very proud to say, has landed two of these positions over the last so many years. 1988 was the first year that, that the Oklahoma Academic Scholar Program was committed to the showing, presentation of this award to the kids, plus scholarship, plus banquet, plus good speakers. And I tried to be to all of them since I've been the high school principal. But at this time, I would like to introduce Peter Huang. Come on up, Peter. And Maggie Rudy. I'm gonna let both of them speak. I ran their transcripts. Peter's going to be our valedictorian this year. And Maggie's gonna be our third-place person this year in, in that standing with, what was your overall GPA, Peter?
4.23, I believe.
Let me check it. That is correct. That is correct. And then, yours was, just to show you the distance between 4.20472 and his, yes, 4.2300. Anyway, these students, which represent Enid Public Schools and all the great things that we do for students, and allow them the opportunities that they take as leaders to do all these things, certainly makes me proud that they represent Enid, that they represent Enid High School, but most of all, Enid Public Schools, all the way through. And it, it really makes me proud every year to go to the banquet that Governor David Bourne President speaks. It's always a very good affair, good food, good laughter. So, you get up here, and I just really like this award. Thank you so much, guys, both of you, for doing this thing.
All right. Well, as Mr. Bierschmidt has introduced me, I am Peter Huang. And I'd like to, first of all, thank everyone for this recognition. And now, for my, I guess, not-so-exhaustive list of future plans, at least yet. So far, I have not decided on which university I would like to attend. However, I do want to major in chemistry. Also, get into a pre-pharmacy program in order to prepare for pharmacy school down the road. That's about it, really, for the future.
Hi, everyone. My name's Maggie Rudy. First of all, I would like to recognize and thank my mother, Tina Rudy, for everything she's done for me throughout my education. Really pushing me to always try my best and be my best. Second of all, I'd like to thank all of you for being here and taking the time to recognize Peter and I for our hard work throughout the school year. For my future, I'm also undecided on where I'll be attending. But I do plan on majoring in chemical engineering and a possible minor in dance, and then continue on to medical school. And that's all for now.
We also have certificates for y'all. I'm gonna be ladies first.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I never even thought about achieving things like this. So, I'm proud of y'all for doing it. Thanks for coming and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Do your best.
Pretty high cutting. Good job. Congratulations.
I don't believe our guests are here, here.
You wanna go ahead and say a word about them?
Absolutely. We just wanted to-
Hey, Jim? Nobody's standing out there and waiting to come in, are there?
No.
Okay.
We just wanted to take a moment this evening to recognize not only the district's selection for the American School and University publication for the design of the university center, but also the architects, the architects in partnership who made that possible. And they wanted to specifically recognize Matt Graves, Russell McGee, and Robert Barnett, who worked on, specifically on the design. So, it was quite, and Dr. Floyd has both the plaque and the publication. And it was quite a treat to be recognized for the design of the building, especially as proud as we are of the program that takes place inside. So, we certainly want to thank them for the role they've played in making it possible.
They said they were gonna be here tonight, but they're coming a little distance. So, I guess either they decided not to come or got hung up. But obviously, everybody's very proud of the university center. And they made a special trip down here last week to present me actually with two plaques. And we will display this one next door in our new office when we get ready to move over there. And then, I've got one in my office as well. And then, you've got a copy of the letter for the School and University Magazine recognition we got there as well. And, you know, all of those guys and also hints of construction here locally did a wonderful job on that. And something for EPS and the whole community to be proud of for a long time. So, we thank those architects in partnership.
Ready for principals? You standing for that thing, John?
Probably done by 11:30 or something.
I've seen some of these meetings.
All right. It is my pleasure to introduce some of our principals in elementary schools today. We have about half of them here because of, just time-wise, we'll recognize the other half next month. But probably, one of the hardest jobs in the school district is being a principal, because you're just tasked to do with so many, to do so many things. And the position over the years has truly gone from a building manager to an instructional leader. But they haven't taken away the building manager part either. I mean, you still have to deal with that aspect of it, with the scheduling and the discipline in the classrooms and helping with that. And so, it really is my honor to recognize these principals. I asked the principals to kind of put down some things that they're most proud of at their school. And amazingly, they came in pretty much what I expected them to come in. We talk a lot at our principals' meetings and we share a lot. And so, I get to hear their hearts a lot. And the first recognition, I'll just have you stand where you're at, is from Adams Elementary. It's Beverly James. Beverly, she's the most proud of teamwork in her building. And truly, that shows when you go to their building. They're a consistent performer every year. She has built a team not only in her building, but with some partnerships as well in the, in the community. And through those partnerships, she's gonna be able to offer one-to-one technology through some Chromebooks and some different things like that. The, the beautiful part about that is Beverly has not just held that to herself. She's actually shared the wealth, I would say, a little bit. And she's shared with some of our other schools that have that need as well. And so, the thing that I will tell you about Beverly is Beverly is a doer. She absolutely gets things done. And I love that about her. And so, Beverly, thank you for what you do for the kids at Adams Elementary. Thank you for what you do in the district. And just keep doing what you do, because you just always find a way to be successful. And we appreciate that about you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You can introduce your principal, one of our new district coins tonight. Now, don't get too excited and don't work in any machines.
I've been here in Enid 23 years. I've been in education 34 years. And I've loved every minute of it. And I have loved being in education.
Thanks, Amber. Thank you, Amber. The next, actually, we're gonna recognize two people, but we'll start with the head principal at Coolidge Elementary, and that's Jennifer Cruz. And Jennifer is most proud of the fact that they have built such a positive culture and environment at Coolidge Elementary. And I can truly say, I would encourage each one of you to go by Coolidge and get in those classrooms and watch those kids. It is a great learning environment. And it's just been fun to watch that, that transformation take place. She has teachers that are willing to really do anything that those kids need. They, they give extra time. They have 170 students that they're helping after school, which is the highest number they've ever had. And 18 teachers have signed up to do that. To get teachers to do that on a day when they've worked for eight hours already is incredible. And that tells you about the kind of culture and climate that they have there and the kind of willingness that they are just to do anything. Jennifer is always willing to share in our principals' meetings. She's excellent at looking at data. And we don't just teach by our gut anymore about how we feel. And she is a leader in looking at data and making best decisions for her school. And she's not afraid to make difficult decisions. And sometimes, that ruffles a few feathers. But I can tell you, it's always for the benefit of students. And, and I just appreciate that about you. So, Jennifer, thank you so much for what you do there. And I'll let him give you the coin.
Well, I appreciate this so much. I'm so excited. I'm gonna cry. I've been in Coolidge for four years. Yeah, four years. At, or at Enid for four years. And I must say, this is one of the best towns to come live in. And this is a fantastic district. I truly make, I think we made a great decision coming here. My daughter's a high school student. So, I've enjoyed Enid, and I really enjoy being here. Go Coolidge, we do have the best school.
And her sidekick, and I probably shouldn't say it like that, but it truly is a, it's a true partnership. Reba, her official title's administrative intern, but that's just another way to say assistant principal, because they do everything an assistant principal does in elementary school. That's how we staff them. Reba, it's her first year as an administrator. Reba has done an excellent job. She fits right in with our administrative team. She was a high, high-quality teacher. And so, there was no doubt when she was selected to be an administrative intern that she would just take that work ethic into the administrative team. And we would benefit from that. So, we appreciate you being part of the team there. She's an instructional leader. I mean, that's, that's one of her gifts, for sure, because she was such a good teacher. You know, some, some of us had to go from being a manager to learning the instructional leader part, was she's got that part down, and that's probably the hardest part. And so, just the managing of a building is probably what her eyes have been open to a little bit this year. But she has done an excellent job. And it's just fun to have her around. And so, Reba, we appreciate you as well. Thank you. Our next principal is Polly Maxwell. She's the principal of Eisenhower Elementary School. Small and mighty is Eisenhower. It's a great school. It serves a great population. Our military, I mean, you can't say enough about that population and what they do. It's a unique culture, because like Polly said earlier, many of the students come and go after a couple of years. So, you don't have a lot of time to build those relationships. And so, they do an excellent job of building those relationships. And Polly is the leader in that. One of the things that I have appreciated about Polly, she didn't put this down about, about one of her proud things, but when you have a small school, when you have a big school, it has some challenges. When you have a small school, it has some challenges. And we have professional learning communities where teachers meet. Well, when you only have one of each grade level, that can be kind of difficult. And it's hard for teachers to be able to collaborate sometimes. And Polly has gone above and beyond in coordinating with the Air Force community and bringing in volunteers to cover what they call a lunch and learn. And I think they do that once a week. And that's their professional learning community time. And they, they spend time eating and learning together while volunteers watch the building. And that's been a great tool. Polly is just proud of the way they treat their students and the military out at Eisenhower. And she should be, because she does a great job with that. And she's a great liaison to that community for us as well. And so, the thing that I love about Polly is she, she's like the Energizer Bunny. She just keeps going and going and going. She has tons of energy, and it's always positive energy. And so, Polly, we just appreciate that energy that you put into the district every day, and Eisenhower particularly. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome to come anytime through our pearly gates.
If you can get in. Garfield. Jane Johnson. Jane, if you'd stand. It's our largest non-high, it's, it's the largest building that's not the high school. They have 730 students in that beautiful building. And that's a lot. That's a lot of little people to keep track of. And I can't think of a better person to do that. Jane was at Hays for a long time and served that community very well. And really, the district needed her in another building doing what she does, and that's building a school community. She's positive. She knows how to build that community. She knows what, what kids need. And, you know, she's had some learning to do this year, even though she's a great-experienced principal. But different buildings just call for different talents. And Jane has done an excellent job in that building. I'm just gonna tell you, she's made me look like a genius. And so, that's been a good move. And Jane is the right person at the right time for Garfield Elementary right now. And there's 730 kids right now and 40, 45 teachers that are benefiting from her leadership. And the, the gains that they have made in reading and math this year because of their focused instruction and their focused intervention is what she put down as, that she's proud of, and she has every right to be. And she has also fostered some community partnerships with St. Mary's that have just been huge. And so, principals go above and beyond all the time. And Jane is not an exception in that. So, thank you, Jane, for what you do.
Thank you.
And her right-hand person is Vicki Elliott. And we are very blessed to have Vicki. And Vicki returned to Garfield this year after being at Coolidge for a couple of years as an administrative intern. And again, right person at the right time. As Jane was transitioning into a new role, Vicki has worked at Coolidge and now Garfield. And that's just a different environment. And she's done an outstanding job with that. She's really helped that transition with Jane. Jane, on numerous occasions, has said, can we just, can we duplicate her? You know, because just the benefit that she is to the school. The thing I like about Vicki is she's always smiling. She is always smiling. And so, that's, that's a benefit. She is always smiling, and so, that's a benefit, you know, because there's not always reason to smile, but you still, when you're walking down that hall, you can't let those problems affect other people. And so, you handle something that's difficult in a classroom or in your office, but as soon as you step out, you've got to have that smile on your face, because everybody needs to know that somebody's in charge, and you do a good job with that, Vicki, and it's much appreciated, so thank you for what you do.
Just going to ask her many stories about me.
The next one we'd like to recognize is Jim Rainey from Glenwood Elementary. And I think most of you know Jim, but Jim, when I asked him what he's proud of, and I knew this would come out, he's proud of the work that they've done. They have a high population of special education students, and Jim has a heart for those individuals. But I will tell you, he has a heart for every student. You know, sometimes I have to call these principals and say, hey, you know, I need you to work with this family and take this family, or there's different situations. There has never been a time when I have ever thought I was going to get any pushback whatsoever from Jim about students that come to his building, because he's just, he's a problem solver, and he takes those challenges on, and he's very competitive, and you can tell that, because he's like, you know what, okay, they didn't make that work, but guess what, I'm going to, you know? And you love that attitude, because you're going to find out how to make kids successful. And so, Jim, I appreciate that. The thing I also like about him is he's not scared to ask hard questions, and in meetings, he'll ask hard questions, which makes us think and makes us grow. And so, it's great what you do, and it's great for the community that you've built within that community. And so, thank you for what you do, and it's much appreciated. He has an assistant principal, Mr. Scott Allen. Scott, if you'd stand up. Scott came to us this year, and when I say he came to us, I mean, he came to the, to the, the force to the right side, you know? From the middle school, from secondary, came down to elementary, and it's been, it's been great for both of us, I think, for the elementary schools and for Scott. Scott had a few things to learn in dealing with little people, but he's done an awesome job. And Scott probably, to be honest with you, he may have the hardest job in the administrative ranks, and that's because he splits time between two buildings. He splits at Glenwood and at Monroe, and so he has to know two cultures, he has to know two sets of kids, he has to know two sets of teachers, he has to deal with two principals. And so, that can be difficult, but Scott also does it with a smile on his face. And then Scott, Scott is also an incredible instructional leader, and he knows academics. He was a good classroom teacher, better than good. And I know a little bit of his background. We happened to be in the same district before, and he just had a great reputation for being a great teacher, and he has brought that to the administration as well. And he's got a great sense of humor, so, you know, he can just laugh off the situation, and the kids love him, you know? I don't know, I don't know what it is, but they just, they just love you, man, so. And that gets, that relationship piece will carry you a long ways. And so, Scott, thank you for what you do, and you just work hard, and I appreciate it. We'll do the second half next month, so thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Well, we do have one more recognition. One of the things that we do when we recognize folks each month, is we recognize folks who go above and beyond and go the extra mile. And one of the folks that we have not recognized yet is Amber Fitzgerald. Amber works hard every month putting these recognitions together and makes sure that the president of the board is all the notes that he needs to say the right names, get the right documents to the right people. But in addition to that, I told Dr. Floyd that she also was instrumental in our search for our superintendent. Did a lot of legwork for us, a lot of extra effort there. And so, Amber, we appreciate what you do for us, too, so.
You guys don't surprise me, man.
Okay, audience to visitors. Do we have folks who are going to speak to us this evening? Brings us to the superintendent's report. It's riveting every month, so we moved it up in the agenda. Didn't want you all to have to wait.
I noticed that as we got later in the meeting, some of the board members were nodding off, so I moved it up to the agenda a little bit. All right, I'll try to run through this relatively quickly. I do have a number of items. But first, I wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are with the strategic planning process. And we are through our two-day design team meeting, where we had forty-five or so folks from across the community there, and that was very beneficial. And now, we are ready to break out into what is called create teams. And board members, you have this handout, I believe, at your place that says, Goals and Action Ideas at the top. These are the broad category areas that all of that work we have done thus far has kind of boiled down to, and you see the goals that that process has yielded thus far. The first one is personnel and professional development, and Randy is going to be leading that create team. The second one is facilities, and Ron Garrison and Carl are going to be leading that. And on the next page, we've got a segment for community and parent relationships, and Amber's going to be leading that group. Curriculum and Instruction, Doug Stafford is going to lead that for us. And then Goal Five is assessment and accountability, and I think Ms. Fowler has agreed to lead that team. She's going to look at her schedule and see if she can do that. Goal Six is enrichment opportunities, extracurricular activities, cultural activities, that type of thing, and Candace and Jim are going to lead that group. And then Goal Seven is character development, and Jane Johnson and Steve Hayes are going to lead that group. So, what will happen next for each of those groups is that our consultant, who was there with us for the design team group, has sent out an email to those leaders, and their job now is to organize four to five people for each of those areas that will join us for two days. One all-day meeting on the twenty-fourth of this month, and a second all-day meeting on the thirty-first of this month. And at least one person from each of those goal areas will be representative of the design team group that met for two days on February the sixth and seventh. So, we got that continuity piece as well. So, those leaders will develop those teams, four to five people, and their job is then to do a little research on that particular area, and then be ready to report to the whole group on the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first as to what research they've done. And then we're going to spend those two days trying to hone in on, trying to narrow it down as to how we can develop a plan for each of those areas. And so, the consultant will be in here on the twenty-fourth and thirty-first of this month, and we'll, one of those days, we are meeting here in this room, and the other day, we're meeting over at Longfellow, right? Okay? And so, that's kind of how that will work, and I think that'll be a good process for Next, you have a copy in front of you, board members, that looks like this. It says, "Any public schools, public and private partnership leads better, stronger schools." We have been recognized by this journal. It's called District Administration Journal as a district of distinction. You might remember that I mentioned that to you a month or two ago, that we had applied, and we were awarded recognition by that group for all of the public-private partnerships that the district has been successful in in recent months. And so, we heard a little bit of that tonight from the University Center. So, congratulations to EPS and all the folks that have so graciously partnered with our school district for all the many things that have occurred for kids, and that's very beneficial. And always nice to get all the recognition there as well. Okay, wanted to say a word about the ad valorem issue, the nineteen-ninety-two issue that we were able, successful in getting our money this year. So, now the question is, what do we do about the past twenty-two years? Well, we had a meeting recently of superintendents that are in our similar situation, and there were two, we left that meeting with two ideas. One is to try to develop a list of everyone that is in our situation. We're still waiting on that list. But the second one was to try to develop some talking points for superintendents to talk to their boards about. We've already done it, because you guys authorized the administration back in December to, December to enter into legal action if we need to. So, you guys have already authorized me to do that. We think that the next step then is to talk to a lawyer that is not really tied to any particular district, because as you might well imagine, when you're talking about trying to recover a half a million dollars a year for twenty-two years, that's ten million dollars for our district. But in order to regain that money, other districts are going to be losing that money. So, you don't really want any lawyer or law firm that may be on one side of that coin or the other. It would put them in a very precarious situation. So, we think an outfit called Crow and Dunleavy will be a good one to enter into there, and the estimate that they have, that has come to me anyway, for that will be, is roughly ten thousand dollars to do the research and then present to us some future legal steps if we were to go down that road. We hope to get a number of school districts to enter into that with us, such that we spread that cost of that ten thousand dollars out, such that no one district is hurt very much on that. So, that's kind of where we stand right now. Many districts have board meetings in the next two or three weeks, and so we hope that they will be talking to their boards about what we have already talked to you about and get authorization, much like you have provided us with. So, any comments about that before we move on?
Do we have any idea of like what percentage of districts across the state might be in the winners and losers, or?
We don't have that list.
Don't have any idea?
Part of the problem is that some years, they might have been a winner, and other years, they might have been a loser, and so it kind of goes like this.
It's going to run in groups of counties based on the fact that the county assesses or setting the ratio that they assess that personal property for commercial entities. Garfield County as well, Oklahoma County.
But it's enough money that I think we would be doing the students and the employees and the taxpayers of this school district a disservice if we did not at least explore the possibilities of trying to recover that money. So, I think it's worthy enough monetarily to try to explore the options. Now, who knows if we'll be able to recover that, all of that or part of it, who knows? But I think we need to make good faith effort at least for our taxpayers on that issue. And we've got support of our legislators. I think both representatives and our state senator, all three are on board for supporting us in that effort, so that's good. Okay, in a weak moment of mine, I agreed that EPS would serve as the United Way Drive Chair for next year, so caught me in a weak moment.
The new guy.
Yeah, I know, I need to burn in the fire, but I've had a longstanding relationship with United Way and really a proponent of what they do to not give a handout, but give a hand up to those in greatest need. And so, I've done that before, and I'm happy to do that, and Amber has agreed that she will catch me when I fall. Just want to let you know that that's not current, that it'll be for next year's campaign. Let's see. Okay, Congressman Lucas will be in town on Wednesday of this week at nine a.m. at the NLC Gant Center. I won't be able to attend, because we have an administrators' meeting that day, but will you be there?
I'll be there.
Okay, so you can represent us, and anybody else is welcome that wants to go, nine a.m. out at the Gant Center at NLC. You'll be happy to know that sugary snacks are back in, so I know we will all be able to sleep better now.
Are there samples, or?
Bring them in this time, but maybe next time. We've got our accreditation visit scheduled for April the sixteenth. So, okay, Jones, our regional accreditation officer will be in our district on April the sixteenth for that. And we are making great progress next door. Just FYI, we were thinking about having our first board meeting next door next month, but Ernie and I are both going to be in Washington, D.C., talking to legislators, April twentieth through the twenty-third, and Kyle will be running that meeting, and he had what I thought was a good idea for a change. He sent us a text today, I thought it was a good idea. Since Ernie and I are both going to be out, and he'll be running the meeting, why don't we have April's meeting here, and then when everybody, Ernie and I are back, we can have our first meeting hopefully in May next door, and that'll also give us a little bit of extra time to get everything over there. But I was through the other day, and it is really looking nice, and I think everybody's going to be very pleased with that. And we also are working with architects to get a new electronic marquee sign out there in the corner, so I think that'll be nice. You probably saw where the feds approved the Oklahoma waiver on middle school math and elimination of the double testing, and that's good for middle school. It's good for kids, because they don't have to take two tests. Good for middle school accountability, but, I mean, that score will count at the high school level, but not the middle school level. So, good for one, but not so good for the other, but good for kids. Okay, the rally that comes up on March, at the end of March, we will be taking a group, I told the campuses, they could send up to five per campus to that event, and it's a site-based decision as to who they select to be their five representatives. We'll leave at seven o'clock that morning. It's on the Monday, March thirtieth. We're going to leave at seven a.m., go up there, or to Oklahoma City, get into the Capitol, visit with some legislators, and then the event actually starts outside at twelve-thirty. We'll participate in that as well, and then come home. Saw where the State Board of Education postponed the SLOs and SOOs in the TLA evaluation system, and I think everybody is very pleased about that, because there is just no way to make that equitable, so we're pleased with that move. Okay, Joni and I attended a Garfield County Health Department meeting last week, and the topic of conversation was really, I sit on that board all the time, but I invited our head nurse to join me for this meeting as well. And the issue there was vaccinations, immunizations, and we all know that's a problem, not only here, but statewide. And the figures they gave us were that in Garfield County as a whole, only sixty-two percent of the population is compliant with immunizations, and thirty-eight percent of the kids were not up to date on their vaccinations. So, again, that's not a unique problem just to this district, it's statewide and nationwide. But with the measles issue and the typhoid issue that has arisen recently, we can, we wanted to meet with them and talk about it and see if we can brainstorm and come up with ideas on how we can, we can try to improve that some. So, we've offered to have immunization clinics at our campuses, and they're exploring that possibility. Part of the problem is that when they don't know exactly what vaccine each kid needs, then there's a storage issue and a heating and cooling issue for the vaccine, and they don't know if they're going to have enough for a particular population and that type of thing. But I would say the biggest thing that came out of that meeting is that that board chose to authorize the Health Department to, in essence, spend what they needed to, to try to get at this problem, because it is such a health issue for the entire community. And so, that, they felt good about that, and... And so that, they felt good about that and because they're always pinching pennies in that department. And we told them that we, the board, told them that Carla Dionne is the administrator over there. And she's relatively new, I think she's been there maybe just a little bit longer than I've been here. But you know, she's trying to watch her budget and everything. And I think she felt a little bit relieved that the board was supportive in her efforts to try to improve the vaccination issue in our community. So it's really a school issue, but it's also a 080 to 4 issue because that's when a lot of immunizations happen. And so if they're already behind during that time period, then they come to us or then they get further behind. So it's a big issue. Okay, I already mentioned that Joni McIntyre, head nurse, went with me to that deal. Appreciated her support. And she, she tries to, she really does a good job in working with all different segments of our population in our community and appreciate her efforts. Jerry Hellman and Lincoln Adult Ed were recognized a couple of different ways recently. They were highlighted in the Volume 1, Issue 2 of the Foundation's Journal. And you all will recall that, well, you know that he does excellent work over there at Lincoln. And so they did an article in this journal on Lincoln. But also, the better news is that he was notified by the State Department that Lincoln is the proud recipient of 111,000 windfall dollars. And that was really nice to get dumped in his lap. But apparently the State Department had a pot of money sitting over here, i.e. the former state superintendent that was unaccounted for. So they doled it out to several adult ed programs and ours was beneficiary of that. So Jerry is going to get together with his folks and see how they can best utilize that one-time pot of money, understanding that it can't go toward recurring costs because it won't be there every year. But nice little windfall for him and they do great things over there. And we're very proud of what they do and I think that's really nice for them to be, to have that. I think you might have a copy of this at your place also. This, for some of you that may be newer to the board, is kind of a list of OSSBA recognitions and awards that board members can be nominated for. So I wanted to make sure that you guys had an exhaustive, this exhaustive list. And if anybody feels like we could or should be nominating one or more of our board members for any of those recognitions, will then let us know and we'll try to go about doing that. Ms. Fowler, have we been involved in this off and on throughout the years?
And, excuse me. Ernie may be pleased if I can't talk. No, I wish you would all think about this Barbara Lynch Community Partner Award because we have had such success in the last, with our building project and everything, with our community really stepping up and being supportive and being involved. And this is one, just they don't have to be involved with the school board at all, just anyone in the community who has really put education first and shown how much they believe in what we're doing. So I feel sure we could have a nomination in that area.
If you guys would like us to, Amber and I can go work on that. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
We, actually, the very first year that we did it, Todd Earl won the very first award because he was such a leader in the bond issue that we had passed that year.
Also, I think you have this sheet at your place. This was Saturday, January 26th. We went to some board training that night over at Medford. And for those of you that were not there, I thought it might benefit you to see the upcoming possible workshops down there at the bottom. And if anybody wishes to attend any of that training, just let Carol know and we'll see about getting you registered. This Crisis Response Handbook is something that we have had planned to meet with emergency responders in our community twice now and got weathered out both times. So we're going to be meeting with the emergency responders in our community and revamping this and getting, kind of revising our emergency response plan just to make sure it's up to date. Those of you that went to that Thursday night board meeting over at Medford, board members filled out their financial disclosure form that's required. Is everybody up to date now on that?
We have two members that weren't able to be there that I'll be glad to work with individually. If you want, we can stay a little while after the meeting tonight or you can make arrangements.
Sit aside a couple hours.
It's not too bad.
Make sure you get a meal out of it.
Not too bad really. And I do think they were successful in kind of alleviating some board member's fears on that. It's not going to be as onerous as once thought, I think. I wanted to let you know that I'll be participating in the For the People Vision for Oklahoma Public Education workshop on Friday, March 13th in Edmond. And.
So you're going to miss our legislative breakfast?
No, I'm going to be at the breakfast and then I'm going to head over there. Also, I wanted to let you know that you may have heard that we had a little bit of vandalism some time ago. It's probably been a couple of months now. Over at the football field on that box bench. And so we really got two things going on. One is to get that refurbished. But also, we had an email from Jessica Lasco. They want to do a similar type deal in honor of, let's say, the grandchildren want to honor their grandfather Everett Burdick in a similar fashion. And the Pellos Memorial of Enid and the grandkids want to do a similar type deal. So what we decided to do was go over there by the flagpole at the football stadium and kind of have a memorial area around that deal. It will be maybe a little bit safer. So just want to let you know that's upcoming. And we are currently working on getting wheelchair access to the stage over at the high school, working with, I guess we are, where are we on that?
Working on the second set of plans with Brudeman Engineering. The first set would have eliminated the only backstage door to get players in a school play onto the stage.
So we've got to keep that in mind. All right, and last piece of the superintendent's report, I'm going to turn over to our future superintendent, Duncan Public Schools. So this is her last board meeting with us. Melanie and her committee has done a lot of work on exploring getting back into the random drug testing. She's going to share that PowerPoint presentation with you.
This is part of superintendent's report, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But really, any detailed questions about funding sources or any work moving forward, that'll be up to Dr. Floyd and the board to say what we're going to do for the future. And then those questions can be answered at another report in another time. I want to open communication, but I also want you guys to understand that this is just a report out from the recommendations from the committee.
Have you guys been working on this how long?
Since October. So we were very methodical in our process. You saw from the PowerPoint, since we get it pulled up, the members of the committee. But the request was that we would.
Listen, Melanie, can we pause for one second?
Sure.
We, our architect showed up, so we'll let him, we'll go ahead and do this and then we'll come back to you.
I hate to interrupt, especially when I show up late. We've seen it, gotten our signals crossed.
Was it Ryan's fault?
It was. I called him, but, and then gave him the wrong time. But he should be at Norman's board meeting that starts about now. So I'm representing our design team who worked on your university center. They're actually at Norman Public Schools presenting their project, the first phase of design tonight. So, and then my other partner is meeting with potential clients. So it's me, so I'm fortunate to be here. We were recognized this year in the fall by a school in University Magazine and received our plaques about a month ago that we wanted, you guys have two, one to keep in administration, one to keep on site. It's been a fantastic project. We, it's visionary, I know that it's the second one in the state. But the other one was, I believe, a renovation of existing space. And this one was really, really, we were given an opportunity to try to translate your vision for university center, for AP courses and dual credit. I mean, it's, and now Norman, we're copying you guys, we're doing one at each site. So we're doing one at one. But just wanted to thank you for that opportunity and having confidence in us to pull it off. And really, I think you guys deserve the credit.
Well, we certainly, we mentioned all that in your absence when you weren't here.
And we took the credit, by the way.
It's nice for you guys and the school district to have a hold and get recognized in some publications. And obviously, something, the bottom line is something very, that we can all be proud of. The students can be proud of, the employees can be proud of, and the community can be proud of. And you guys did an excellent job and we greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
We do have a certificate of recognition we'd like to give from us and it's suitable for framing. And so we only have one copy. There you go, fax it in or something.
You guys will want to stay for the entirety of the meeting now, right?
Yeah.
Drug testing. It doesn't get any better than that. Thank you very much, great job, we appreciate it.
We did have a large group from Norman administrators and teachers who came and took a tour and asked a lot of questions. So they are well aware of what's going into it and what they'll have.
I think one of the comments was to add, that you wish you would have added more common space. That you're really using that a lot of flexible classroom settings. And that's, you know, one of the objectives of this type of facility, one that it stimulates kids in the way that they learn. It's less rigid than the traditional classroom setting. So it's really been effective. So we've tripled what you guys have, the common space that you have, we've tripled that.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you for showing up. Thank you, appreciate it. Sorry, Melanie.
So there was a request in August that we form a committee to look into why we were no longer doing mandatory random drug testing. The district has a policy in place since 2005. And I know just because I was in a previous district where there's a lot of community discussion that went into play just implementing a policy like that. And so I know when it was first implemented, there was a lot of discussion about it. So we wanted to make sure that with this committee, we had the same, maybe not as wide, I'm not sure I wasn't here when it was first implemented, but we definitely wanted to have members who represented different components of the community on the committee, which would then do an inquiry into, is the policy as it stands sufficient to move forward if Dr. Floyd and the board decides that that's what we want to do and make sure that we are doing random drug testing again? Or does the policy as it stands need to have some changes and some revisions to it? And so those were some of the questions that we looked at as part of the committee. So I wanted to talk about the committee itself. We made sure that there were parents represented. And I think, you know, you can see we had representatives from different groups as part of the school district. But the students that were a part of the committee were critical to some of the decisions that we made, our recommendations that we made moving forward, and they had a strong voice in the meetings. We heard from the health and wellness side, we heard from campus police, and we heard from the legal side, the law enforcement side, we heard from the administrative side. But towards the end of the time when the committee met, we also heard from the counseling side. And Mr. McKeon was instrumental in getting representatives here from youth and family services and also other agencies, health agencies in the community so that they could give input into what it needs to have an education component as part of a comprehensive program for drug prevention.
When you said the students were critical, you meant they were an important part of, not critical of what you did.
Right, they were critical to add in, an important part, their voice was strong on the committee. No, the students were supportive and they, in fact, you know, of course, I have, you know, a special place in my heart for our teenagers, I'm quirky like that. But kids give strong voice to issues. And so I think, you know, the more we can listen to them, the better decisions we make. I think we discovered that as part of the design team process. It's important to have those student voices in the room. So the purpose of the committee was to review the current policy, gather information on current needs, and recommend changes and report findings. And that's what we did, so that's why I'm here tonight is just to show you what we've discovered in our conversations. The way we began was to look at some history of the policy. We looked at the Supreme Court ruling. There was an early ruling in the 90s that allowed for schools to do random drug testing. And then the Tecumseh case in 2002, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but Tecumseh, Oklahoma, had a suit filed against them because they wanted to expand it beyond student athletes. And they expanded it to all extracurricular activities. And the Supreme Court upheld that decision. So as a committee, we talked about that case because that was important to us to understand whether the policy as it is written now is only for OSSAA sanctioned activities. But because of the Supreme Court ruling in the Tecumseh case, we could then expand that net if we chose to do so. We looked at our current drug testing policy. In fact, Judy was on the committee, we tore that thing apart for a couple of meetings just to make sure it said what we wanted to say, we were real clear about what the expectations of the policy were and what the procedures were. We looked at historical evidence, the implementation of the policy, how it was funded. And then, as I said, we listened to recommendations from health officials in the community currently. So we looked at some data, and I've sent this to the board previously. And I don't know if you had opportunity to look at the link. But, you know, as you look at it, the data's pretty neutral on whether it has a strong impact or not on student drug use. And that's pretty consistent over time as other districts across the nation have implemented mandatory random drug testing. You know, it doesn't have an impact compared to schools that don't have the policy. It's pretty negligible, it's pretty consistently that whether you have a policy or you don't have a policy, you're still getting the same amount of drug use in a school and you're still getting the same attitudes. But knowing that, and even knowing that only 1% of our students tested positive, the committee agreed to keep moving forward with the conversation. Because as we discussed it over time, it still was important that it was part of a deterrent to drug use. And students, remember, were in the room and they weighed in on that issue as well. So we asked the committee to explore these questions. Does the policy include the right population? And we talked about that and knowing that the Supreme Court ruling in the Tecumseh case would allow us to expand our net, that was something that we discussed as a group. Who will coordinate the testing? We talked about sustainability. There's a reason why the program is not implemented today. It wasn't sustained, and why was that? So as a committee, we explored that. Was it financial or was it the capacity, the personnel in order to coordinate the program? What was the issue with that? Are funding sources available? What is the expected impact? It was really important to the group that we keep our expectations reasonable and grounded in the fact that, you know, you cannot say that this is going to eliminate drug use at the high school altogether. Based on the research and based on past history and based on what we were hearing from health officials in the community, that was not a reasonable expectation. So we reset our expectations. And then the big question, should we continue with the policy? We started in October and we held meetings through January, once a month on a Monday in the evenings. So these are the recommendations that. So these are the recommendations that came from the committee. Mandatory random drug testing at EPS should be part of a comprehensive drug prevention program, which includes education, outreach and counseling. Knowing that it's only one piece of the puzzle, it would not be reasonable, as I said, to set that as this program is going to solve all of these problems. So it has to be part of a larger solution, and that just makes sense, based on all of the advice that we got from people who do a lot of work with drug prevention, intervention and counseling in the community. MRDT at EPS should test fewer students, but from a larger pool, including all extracurricular activities, so the committee felt that if we were going to move forward, that we need to expand the net, and that would mean a policy revision. MRDT at EPS should include grade seven through 12, the previous policy only included grades eight through 12, so that would mean a revision. MRDT at EPS should employ hair follicle testing primarily, but should allow for urine sampling. And the reason was, is the committee began to then explore what were the options in terms of what tests are available out there, what are other districts using, what tests would be most reliable in terms of, you know, we kept hearing stories about kids would be able to cheat the test, or they wouldn't take it seriously, or then we have to get into issues of chain of custody and legitimacy in terms of the, from the test, when it is, when the sample's taken, to the time that you get it to the lab, what is that process? And that's all written in the policy. We started leaning towards hair follicle testing because that's something that other districts have now moved to, from urine sampling to hair follicle. So I want to say that these costs are estimated costs, and as I said earlier, I'm here just to report what the work of the committee. These are questions that need to be further explored. We do know certain things about the cost based on the research that the committee members did. For instance, we know that we, one company that we discovered will do hair follicle tests cheaper than what local sources will do it, but it's a company out of, they have an office in California and they have a branch in Dallas, and so we would have to take the sample and then ship it off, but it is considerably less expensive. Randomly select 150 students per year from August to May, the policy as it's written now asks for a baseline from every student athlete, that's expensive. And if we expand the net to all extracurricular activities, that's even more expensive. So the committee recommended that we narrow down the pool and we test throughout the year, so many per month, and that it would be random. I had a couple of questions about what does it mean random, and this is something that you should consider moving forward as well. You lose your credibility when you don't have a reliable source that's collecting the sample and sending it off, and then suspicions start to arise about, well, random doesn't really mean random, you know, I was chosen three times, so and so was never picked, and so that's something that has to be considered in terms of coordination of the program, how is that going to be done? So we estimated that, about 7,500, and then the cost of coordination, we have youth and family services counselors onsite in every building, and that's at no cost to the district, so we have somebody who can offer those drug counseling services to our students. Now this staff member doesn't have to come from the athletic department, but it's possible that that might be an area where we would be, have a staff who could coordinate that. That is an estimated cost of a full-time employee, and I think we have to consider that full cost, because it would be a person on staff who would help. Now whether that person would also teach half a day, that's something we could talk about, or whether it's somebody who is paid an additional stipend, but we also have to consider sustainability. I mean, this is work to coordinate this program, and I would not recommend that you put it on the back of an administrator or somebody who's teaching full-time, just the logistics of the program, I don't think it would work. And so educational materials, if we wanted it to be part of a comprehensive program, you need to consider things like a speaker that might be involved, or any kind of additional curriculum that you might want as part of a health program or drug education program to go with it. So again, these are estimated costs. So estimated cost of the district, $66,000. So MRDT is in current board policy, but it is cost prohibitive as it is currently written. Changes to the policy could eliminate some costs, but it would still require the district to pay for the cost of testing and coordination. MRDT is only operative if it is used as a preventative measure to deter student drug use, and it should be used as part of a comprehensive drug prevention program.
All right, this is, as Melanie said, it's not an action item on the agenda tonight, but let's pause here and see if you guys have questions for her, since she headed up the committee that, as she said, met many times.
Great job, we talked earlier, and I appreciate the work, and who the board member was, but thank you, Jenny. How do others sustain their programs? Do you know?
I think some schools use grants, which is what the district used when the first time it was implemented. Some schools just devote the cost to it, I mean, they use their school nurse or another person to coordinate the program. I know that, you know, we could always look at options about, you know, possibly asking for community support for the cost of testing, so that might be something, there might be ways to finance, to test themselves as part of the physical, you know, you have a, you have a cost for the physical, and then you could put a fee on top of that. So, you know, Bishop McGuinness, because they're a private school, their students pay for all of that, that's just part of their student fees, but we would have to be careful about how we proceeded with getting in a cost from parents on the drug test.
Is there a cost difference between urine and the hair follicle?
There is a cost difference. The, the company that does the hair follicle is closer to what the urine test would cost, which is anywhere around $35 to $40.
And when we started looking at the hair follicle, we thought it was $100 a test, and so that was making it, very quick, isn't it?
The one, the companies you said that we can send off to that were more cost effective, what's the turnaround time?
They have, I think they said about a 60-day turnaround time, maybe less, they usually, they try to do it pretty quickly, so, because they know that it's, eligibility is important. So actually, I may have, I'll have to go back and look at that toward, because it should be less days than that, do you remember?
Yeah, I don't think it was.
I don't think it was that many days.
60 days.
So that's too, that's too long.
We're done by the season.
That's too long.
Yeah, I think it was that long.
So it's, it's a, it's a pretty fast turnaround time, and so it may be within a week, but I'm just, I would have to get that for you for sure, the turnaround time.
And then on the $55,000, that's the average cost of a full-time employee, is that a teacher? I just hadn't heard that $55,000 number.
Yes.
Cost of the teacher.
Okay, so that's what a teacher makes?
Well, that's, that's an average cost.
The cost of salary and all benefits.
That just seemed like a high number to me.
It's what your benefits and everything include.
It would be an experienced teacher and a counselor.
But the students, I will say, the students who were on the committee were very supportive of it and thought it was a very necessary thing just to be a deterrent, not catch people. One of the main things we talked about was, it gives a student a chance to say, no, I'm not going to try this, or I'm not going to do this, because I might get drug tested and I don't want to lose my eligibility. It was not, you know, to keep everybody from doing it, but being a deterrent was the main reason.
Did the students feel like there was a problem?
Yes.
That it was necessary?
Yes. Wouldn't you say so?
I would say that they were juniors and seniors.
Athletes.
They have, they have concerns, the kids do.
Do you have any idea how many districts have a policy in place and are actually doing it?
Well, I know we were able to look at at least five districts, and that was just a few that we pulled, so I don't have an exact number across the state.
And when we did it in the beginning, it was a private donation that got us started with the drug testing.
And then it wasn't sustained. That probably also part of the problem with funding it through a grant, is you never know if that's going to still be there each year.
That's true.
But wasn't it the Prevention Works people who said they would be
Yes.
Very interested in helping us get fine funding, and they thought funding would be available, so.
Who was that?
Prevention Works.
There are people in the community who we could use as resources.
Wasn't our first grant local?
Yes.
I have a question, the recommendation was started at seventh grade, where did that come from?
I think it came from the preventative side, that they felt that those students are participating as athletes, so this is just a part of how we do things around here, so we might as well start with seventh grade.
That's most definitely where trouble can get started.
Someone narrowing the pool, maybe I missed it, what were we thinking, were we still thinking just athletics or?
No, it would be no longer taking a baseline.
Lowering, okay, we're expanding.
We're widening the net, but lowering that we would test each year.
So the theory there is that in widening the net, even though you're taking fewer samples, it is a bigger deterrent to a larger number of students.
Correct.
So would the, and your recommendation would be to hire a full-time employee to do this with the other part, like you said, possibly teaching, would it be in more of drug education as part of their duties, other than strictly just scheduling and administering a test?
They would need other things to do, so this wouldn't pick up all of their time, so it could be part of a larger comprehensive drug education program, and they would be acting as a drug and substance abuse counselor, and possibly running some advisory curriculum or something like that, or they could be in a classroom half a day and then doing this the other half of the day. So I think there are lots of different combinations of ways that we could accomplish the coordination piece of it, and then maybe have that person doing something else.
Was there any, I'm sure you reviewed the whole policy, but did the committee think that there needed to be any revisions made to, after the sample and possibly positive tests, has happened as far as one of the steps, what happens after that fact?
I think that the policy is pretty consistent with the Tecumseh policy, which was developed around the Supreme Court ruling, and so they felt like because it needed to be preventative, that the steps that are taken after a test is found positive is to protect the student athlete, not to make sure they keep using drugs, but to help get some counseling and support, and so that it's not a punitive action that's taken, there's no public shaming that happens after a student has positive. So no, they didn't really recommend a lot of changes on that component of it.
Because part of the discussion was the coaches don't even know
Right.
If they test positive.
And that's pretty consistent with a lot of the policies that we looked at. If you look at the policies that are adopted, they try to stay pretty consistent, there may be some changes in terms of what they test, or the companies they use, or the number of students that they test, but the consequences are pretty consistent across the board.
Well, if the coach doesn't know, how do they become eligible then?
Well, the coach will eventually know, on the first time, they don't know, and so what happens is, is the family takes care of that with the drug counselor, and then if there's repeated testing that were a test positive, then there's going to be some disciplinary action.
Well, even though it's random originally, if you test positive, then it's not so much random after that.
That's correct.
You get a second test.
That's correct.
Does the policy allow for reasonable suspicion testing?
Well, we got into some discussion about that, because that's where the students said, no, I'm not that comfortable with that. There was a lot of conversation about what it means for reasonable suspicion, it does allow for that, the policy does allow for it, but there was some, some conversation about if somebody could be targeted, and nobody on the committee wanted that to happen.
But that is available, I mean, that can happen under our other drug policy.
The district can legally do it if someone wants it.
A principal has to have probable cause.
Or a school resource officer, that's already in place.
Yeah.
They can explore that, but drug testing is, gets into a gray area, let's say an administrator had reasonable suspicion, they can start exploring that, but I don't know if the mandatory drug testing is part of that.
I would say that at that point, you need to use your drug policy and substance abuse policy at that point, and separate that from your mandatory drug testing policy.
Yeah, I think that's what came out.
Because the intent of the policy is for prevention and deterrent, very.
If they've tested positive, are they required to have another test within so many days? Is that what was in the policy?
Yes.
My last question would be, where do we go from here with Melanie exiting?
Yeah, she's exiting, and Doug will pick this up when he comes in to replace Melanie, and we'll continue pulling information together to bring to you guys before we get ready to recommend anything, but obviously it has a financial component to it, so we would need to figure out if we do make a recommendation to the board, how we're going to fund that.
And that was a big concern of the committee, they knew that that was.
How do you, how do you fund it moving forward? But thank you to all of the committee members for working on that, how many total roughly?
Fifteen, twelve, yeah.
If you'll leave that list with me, we'll be sure and thank them, because I know that was a big time commitment for them, so appreciate y'all working on that, and I think it's a worthy use of our time to continue to explore that. I believe that's the conclusion of the super commission.
Wow.
Wasn't that quick?
Wow.
Not so much?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Well, we thank you, because that was a very informative report, too, so a lot of
information in there, and thank you for the pause in the middle to recognize our architect, so. Brings us back to our agenda, and we're at the point where we look at consent items, and consent items are all under Roman numeral four A, and so we'll take those as a group, I'd entertain a motion to take those as a group unless someone wants to pull one out to discuss individually.
Move we approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now to four B, we need to take these one at a time, so we'll talk about the general funding encumbrances.
General funding encumbrances in the amount of $28,689 and $0.89, recommend approval. Purchase orders 2082 through 2135.
Move we approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Change orders.
General fund change orders to purchase orders one through 2081 in the amount of $155,442.8, recommend approval.
Move we approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Brings us to building fund encumbrances.
Purchase orders 71 through 75 for building fund encumbrances, total of $11,771.40, recommend approval.
Move we approve.
Second.
Well, Joe, thank you for keeping us going. Any discussion?
Where's the door? Where was that put in?
Actually, I think there's a couple of them, let me take a quick look here. It's to repair several handicap doors district-wide, these are the ones that automatically open when someone presses a button, we're having some difficulty, it's a blanket purchase order to work on a couple of them that we're having a problem, so it's not it for any particular school.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Municipal tax levy fund encumbrances.
Purchase orders 10 and 11 in total amount of $7,682.24, recommend approval.
Move we approve.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to record.
Okay, he'll take just a very quick look at the one-line summary that is in your online report, and then I'm going to start a couple of documents around that we'll talk about in just a few minutes, that are kind of a very quick, I call it, a view from the press box look at our school finance situation. First of all, on the financials for the month through February, as you can see, we've collected forty-four million eight hundred and seventy thousand in the general fund, which represents a significant portion of the budget, we're about two-thirds of the way there. We have encumbered at this point, at the end of February, fifty-seven million one hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and we had received goods and services to issue warrants or payments of thirty-one million nine hundred sixty-four thousand, which leaves us a cash balance of just under thirteen million at this point in the year. One of the reasons for that is that ad valorem taxes begin coming in heavily in the month of January, and so that is our second largest single source of revenue, but it comes in at a very focused and concentrated point in the year, and that's why we have such a large cash balance on hand at this point in time. I won't bore you with the details on the remainder of the funds. If you have questions, I would be glad to try to answer them. And I do have, if anyone is interested, a few copies of the complete report that has all the backup details. Glad to provide those if anyone's interested.
So what's your overview, are we in pretty good shape?
We will collect what we're predicting this year. We're going to try not to spend what we budgeted to spend, because the economic outlook for the state is not good. The deficit for next year that our state legislature is dealing with went very quickly when they went into session from three hundred million to six hundred eleven million dollar shortfall for the fifteen sixteen budget. So we can count on not getting a lot of assistance from our legislature. The student population continues to grow statewide, that might level off, but what that means is that we're going to have less money to work with next year per student, even if the legislature is able to hold public education warrants, which is a huge question mark, because every agency but public education would have to be cut significantly for us to manage to get out of it with minimal scars, shall we say, for the fray. So that being said, I'd like to take just a quick look, and you could call this budget one-on-one, school finance one-on-one, but I'd like to give you some statistics that kind of help you understand our general fund budget. And at the next several months' meetings, we'll take other pieces of this budget binder that each one of you got at the last meeting, and I would encourage you to maybe bring it for the next several meetings so that we can look at it together, because I'll reference some documents in it. This is hole punched, so you can put it in the front. Real quickly, the average daily membership is the number of students on the average that are on our classrooms in each of the schools for the year. For the first quarter, our average daily membership, as you can see, was just shy of eight thousand students. We are way ahead of what our demographers predicted we would be in two thousand fifteen. In fact, we're past where they predicted we would be in two thousand eighteen for numbers of students. So, that being said, when you look at our total revenue, which is sixty-three million six hundred and thirty-four thousand, divide that by the average daily membership, or ADM, then you have the amount of money that we have to work with per student, which is seven thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and two cents. That translates down to what each student has behind them. Obviously, some students are much more expensive to educate than others, but this gives you a general figure. Then when we look at our planned expenditures of fifty-eight million seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, in round numbers, divide that by the same ADM, we are planning or budgeting to spend about seven thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents per student. Okay, and again, this is a very average figure. Okay, how does that compare to the state? Well, let's take a look at that. The total expenditures for FY fourteen last year was four billion six hundred and forty-seven million dollars, divided by the total state ADM, which was about six hundred and seventy-five plus thousand. That gives you six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and six cents. That makes it look like we're spending a lot more money per child than the average school district. However, you need to take into account the fact that Enid has, for as long as I've been here, handled its child nutrition programs within the general fund. So we need to go back up and pick those expenditures up on a state level and add those in, and then re-divide. When you do that, our, the state average expenditure is seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents for last year. So as you can see, we're very close to the average, because we're planning to spend about seven thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars. So less than a hundred dollars difference. Okay, any questions so far? I'll try to keep this moving quickly. Again, it is a view from quite a ways away, we're not getting down into the weeds, that's why we're kind of taking a peek at it from the press box. Next, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the accounting system that schools utilize in the state of Oklahoma. It's referred to as OCAS, that's an acronym for the Oklahoma Cost Accounting System. State law mandates that we keep detailed, and I do mean detailed records of all of our expenditures and revenue. The revenue information about it is determined or set forth in six dimensions, and there are seventeen total digits, this is a numerical code system. You got one of those? If you have questions later, don't hesitate. Okay, if you'll look at the third sheet of this handout, you can see how that is structured. We have a dimension for the fiscal year, a dimension for the fund, a dimension for the project. And that number is a critical number, because that's where revenue and expenditures tie together, and it is the set of numbers that we use to track all of the different federal grants and state grants that we receive. So that's what ties the whole accounting system together, the revenue and expenditure side. Then the source of the revenue is a four-digit code that tells us the specific type of revenue that's being brought in. For example, the difference between a donation from a local individual and a Title I grant would be captured in that dimension. The program tells us what type of instructional and/or support functions will be used for that money. For example, all of the child nutrition receipts are Program 700. And so we tie the child nutrition program revenue and expenditure side together with that program, because child nutrition is funded by several different projects, local monies, federal monies, and state monies, all of which have to be tracked with a separate project number to pull it all together, we have a program. So that's kind of how the revenue side of it works. The expenditure side is a little more complex, it has nine dimensions with twenty-seven digits. Okay, and that is located on page twenty-seven.
There's going to be a test on this a little bit later, so if I can get it.
Yes, there's only sixteen digits listed on the revenue dimension.
That's because I think they just showed.
I noticed that too.
You're right.
Do I get bonus points on my test?
If you don't take it forward, you just slow down the process.
Moving right along, we'll talk a little bit more about the expenditure dimensions in just a few minutes. But I would like now to look just briefly at how our revenue comes in in terms of the different types of categories of sources of revenue that we receive. And there's a couple of graphs on page ten and eleven in your budget binder that this ties back to. One of them is a pie chart that shows the total revenue divided up into little pieces of pie. Well, this green chart expresses that just a little bit differently. It looks at the total revenue as one dollar, and then expresses the percentages as cents that make up that dollar. So local sources, all of the local taxes that are paid, as well as any other local sources like donations, local grants, that makes up fifteen point two cents of that dollar. Then intermediate sources, which the primary one is county four mil tax, that makes up two point six cents. The largest single source there is county four mil revenue, and the largest single source of local sources is ad valorem taxes. So I've shown you not only the category and what it represents from the total of one dollar, but also the largest single source of any of those categories. And then for state sources, there are a number of state grants, but the largest single source of state money is the state foundation aid formula. That's the one that we discovered with the help of Dr. Pennington in Ponca City, that we were being short-changed significantly in that funding formula. That represents fifty-seven point three cents out of the dollar, and forty cents of the total budget is state aid alone. So there are obviously a number of other state grants that we have to track. Then federal sources of revenue make up eleven point five cents on the dollar. Title I for economically disadvantaged students is the largest single federal grant, and it represents three cents of that dollar, if you look at the total budget as a dollar. Non-revenue receipts, this is kind of a misnomer, those are the transfers that come from the activity fund that we use to collect the lunch money from the students that are paying customers, and then it's transferred into the general fund. It's considered as a revenue only once, otherwise we're magnifying the money that we're taking in. So that's why they're called non-revenue. To the general fund, it's not new revenue. It's something that was transferred from the other fund that it was receiveded into when the ladies in the lunchroom took the money and deposited in the activity fund. Then other sources of revenue, the primary one there is our fund balance, which is twelve point one cents on the dollar this year. Okay, let's take a very quick look at the expenditure side, and we won't go into the coding part of it anymore, then I will make a comment on the series of the function dimension, which is what is happening with that money. Looking at the pink, or it's kind of a peach-colored chart there. And again, the charts that match that, the pie chart, is on page twenty-eight, twenty-nine of your budget binder. Again, conceptualizing the total expenditure budget as a dollar, fifty-three point four cents is all direct classroom instructional expenses. So the largest thing is of primary importance, and that is face-to-face instruction. The next function is student support services. That includes counseling, testing, student activities, that's six point eight cents. Then instructional staff support services, that includes things like libraries, curriculum development, professional development for teachers, that's seven point eight cents. Then support services for general administration, that would be district-wide administration, one point three cents, that's the Board of Ed, superintendent offices and legal services, and a few other things. Then support services for school administration, this will be building-level instructional leadership, where our principals and their assistants, five point six cents.
Excuse me a minute, Carl.
This minute.
That is a really good percentage for all of our board members to remember, because of the criticism that we get from people who don't know about how much of our budget goes to administration. And every time they pass a new law or some kind of requirement, we need people to be sure we meet those requirements. But anyway, ours is considerably lower than statewide, as I recall.
It certainly is, and has been consistently that way for a number of years. Good point. The next series, after-school level administration, is support services business. This is a bit of a misnomer, it does include my department, which is payroll purchasing and distribution. It also includes human resources, recruitment, public information, and professional development for all people that are not teachers, including librarians, counselors, and principals. So that's a pretty good size lumped together of a number of functions, all of which are in the twenty-five-hundred series of the function dimension. The next one is operation and maintenance of facilities, that's a twenty-six-hundred function dimension. That's all custodians, maintenance, and utility costs, as well as building insurance. Now, that's nine point eight cents on the dollar. Student transportation, all costs associated with transporting students to and from school and to and from school activities, that is three cents on the dollar. Then the child nutrition program, all costs associated with providing breakfast, lunch, and in some cases snacks for after-school programs, that is seven point nine cents on the dollar. And then other is a conglomeration of various unrelated expenses, one of which is left undistributed throughout the year and essentially disappears at the end of the year when we distribute it back to all of the functions after warrants are issued, and that is the workers' compensation premium, which is tied to employees. We wait until we've issued essentially all of the salaries for the year, and then run a program that distributes that almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollar premium out to all of the different functions based on the salaries that were earned in those areas. Okay, one more, a couple of comments, and then I'll let you read the rest of it. The bottom line that I want to talk about today is that we are spending down our fund balance. Fund balance is critical for us to be able to maintain financial stability. It allows us to upfront fund our federal programs. We spend the money first out of local and then request reimbursement from the State Department of Education and/or the federal government for all of our federal programs. We're issuing an interest-free loan to the feds to conduct the programs that they mandate. So in order to do that, we have to have an adequate fund balance. In fact, I was visiting with Randy today earlier and mentioned that there was one summer, not too many years ago during my career, where we actually could not have summer school for Title I because we didn't have an adequate fund balance to be able to spend our local money first and wait to be reimbursed by the federal government. So it is critical that we work towards slowing down the process of spending down the fund balance that we accumulated during the years when we had federal stimulus dollars coming into the state and during which our legislature supplanted funding public schools with federal dollars. There's a difference between supplanting and supplement. Generally, federal dollars are to be used to supplement, to buy extras, but that's not the way it worked when we went through recession. Our state supplanted, in fact, during the time period from two thousand eight to the present, and I hope I don't sound like a broken record, when Oklahoma holds the record for reducing the per capita funding per student for the nation. We have the number one spot on that. So in light of the fact that our legislature is going to be unable to assist us this next year to any great degree in turning the tide around or slowing the freight train down, if you like that metaphor, we are going to need to begin working on slowing it down ourselves. We've absolutely got to begin developing a plan to reduce our expenditure program for next year so that we don't, again, for the fourth year in a row, continue to spend down our fund balance. And there is on page nine of your binder, a bar graph that illustrates our fund balance. And I'm going to go ahead and let that kind of open it up and show that to everyone. This shows that we had our maximum fund balance in two thousand twelve fiscal year, which was just about ten million dollars. We have spent it down in thirteen, we knew we were doing it, the budget was approved. We were anticipating that when the economy turns around, the state would be able to help us out. Two thousand fourteen, we spent it down again. And two thousand fifteen, we are again scheduled to spend that fund balance. to spend that fund balance down again. We need to try to level this off because we're rapidly approaching the minimum fund balance that, in Dr. Floyd and I's opinion, we need to maintain for adequate financial stability. So we are already working with other administrators on developing plans to reduce expenditures and be able to put the brakes on, so to speak. More to come later. Sorry to be the wet blanket, but this is the reality.
Yeah, and it's, it is a dose of reality. So bottom line of all of that, first off, that was kind of a finance one-on-one, first few steps, obviously, probably most beneficial for the newer board members, but it doesn't hurt for veteran board members to hear that periodically as well. So on page two, the next to the last paragraph is really the summarization, that is, that we have got to start now making some decisions on reducing expenditures such that we can stop decreasing our fund balance. And so moving forward, that combined with the fact that the state is already advertising over six hundred million dollar shortfall, and we will be lucky if we're just flat, and I don't see how we can just be, I say we, public ed can just be flat when they're looking at that kind of a financial hole. You add those two things together, and every district is going to have to find a way to tighten their belts, and so we are starting down that pathway.
What percentage do you like to have as a carryover?
Well, the minimum that is healthy is what?
I would say about eight percent, and we're...
And we're right there now.
Right there, and so we're already there, and to dip any lower than that would be dangerous, in my opinion.
Okay. We do have a board policy that mandates a formal budget reduction plan if we reach five and a quarter percent. That policy's been in place for a number of years.
Say that again.
No.
Five and a quarter.
Percent, or?
Five and a quarter percent.
Or at eight?
That's at, that's at eight, but we have a board policy that mandates a formal budget reduction plan if we reached five and a quarter percent. We're not anywhere near there, but eight percent is what I consider to be a safe percentage.
So if we were to dip that low to five and something, it would be definitely serious.
Yeah, alarms go off and cuts start happen.
Exactly, exactly.
So, you know, we, we have a certain percentage of turnover in personnel each year, so we are in hopes that we can get at these reductions simply through attrition, and I think we'll be able to do that. But that's still not replacing people when they leave, and when eighty to eighty-five percent of your costs are tied up in personnel, like public education is, that's really the only way you can tighten your belt, is through personnel reductions. And so I don't think we're to the alarm bells of reduction in force or anything like that, but we are to the point, eight percent, to say we're going to have to tighten our belt on personnel through attrition, and so that's what we're going to move toward. Now the test? You pass out the test now or later?
It'll be a pop quiz.
I'll move we approve.
I'm going to set my calling.
That's good information, Carl. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Would appreciate the finance support.
We have a motion to approve and ban any further testing. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion beyond what we've already had? I used to have a comment, I sat there and calculated, and if we can only come up with some way to raise an additional seven point three million, we can tell the federal government to take a hike.
True.
That's about the amount we get from that.
I saw where some state was trying to do that.
Really?
I forget what state it was, but you can imagine how many federal dollars an entire state gets, and so for them to thumb their nose at the feds on that, they would have to backfill with state monies in a significant fashion, and that's the reason most districts and states can't even consider doing that. You're talking about so big a dollars.
Another real quick, interesting statistic. Special education, which is a federal mandate, was originally supposed to be funded at a level of forty percent from the feds. To date, it has never exceeded fifteen percent here in Enid. So it's, it's a huge cost that they mandate that they don't pay for.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's talk about our NOCE concurrent enrollment agreement. Amber?
I ask the board this evening to please approve a dual-credit affiliation agreement between Northern Oklahoma College and the school district. The primary purpose of this agreement is to determine the things that are responsible for each party in order for us to offer dual credits to our students, which of course is also the University Center, which we talked so much about this evening. It actually serves a second purpose as well. When we apply for H-1 visas for teachers to teach who need sponsorship while they're here as a member of our team, it is very helpful to have an affiliation agreement with the university. So it really serves two purposes, and NOCE has reviewed the documents, and it will be useful for both of us.
Move we approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Carl, you can sign that original form.
Now, we're going to talk about the lease agreement with MAS.
MAS Inc. has been our accounting software provider since we piloted the OCAS system in nineteen eighty-eight. We're very pleased with the value that we received for the lease dollars. It's the least expensive software available for school accounting, and it does, in my opinion, the best job. So we recommend approval of this contract with Municipal Accounting Systems for FY sixteen.
Is that annual?
It's an annual, yes. It's all annual limits.
Move we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's approve our auditors.
Again, we have been using the Charles W. Carroll Accounting Firm, advocated for generations, which is kind of unusual. They are local and do approximately two hundred and fifty school districts in the state of Oklahoma, so they're very versed in what they do. We recommend approval of this auditing contract. They are one of about twenty-five or thirty auditing firms that are approved by the State Department of Education to do public school audits. Both the contract with MAS Inc. and the contract with Charles W. Carroll are contingent upon them having preapproval from the State Department of Education to be on the list of software vendors or auditing firms. Recommend approval.
Move we approve?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're going to tag team and talk about recruitment stipends. Who's going to go first?
Well, Ms. Colin mentioned that I forgot to say a while ago that I, that I recommend the approval of the contract. I very much recommend that we approve the two thousand dollar recruitment stipend. It has been very beneficial as we work to recruit teachers in a very difficult climate, and especially in those hardest-to-find areas: math, science, foreign language, and special education. I ran reports today, two years ago, we hired twenty-four people and provided a stipend to them. Last year, we hired thirty-five and actually have someone who even qualifies for one sixth of the stipend because they teach, she teaches one, one section a day of secondary math. I think it really sets us apart. When I go to HR meetings, we're one of only two districts who are doing this, and a district in the room, when we went around and we shared whether or not we were thinking about it, he said, "No, but I'd like for the two of you to stop." And I said, "I'm hoping that will not happen." So I believe that it makes us competitive at a time when we need it most.
All I would add, all I would add to that is that this is part of our collective bargaining agreement, and the agreement also indicates that the board should approve it annually, so recommend approval.
Move we approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. As far as those, the past two years that have received the two thousand dollars, how many are still employed?
That's a great question. Of the twenty-four, we offered two the first year, and we have thirteen that are still working for us, but we also had two that, that this year have had to move and resign that were part of that original group. So I'm going to work on the retention in those areas, but every year, even at one year, it's made all the difference for the kids we've been able to serve, especially in the area of math and, and I would say also special ed as well. I think we just would have had to have done without, without that as a carrot. I've had several educators tell me that it was the difference in choosing our district than another district.
Okay.
And we still have no language that protects the district if they leave within the first year?
This year, we will have a separate document that they sign with their letter of intent that outlines what we have done. We have had a couple of cases where we've had to make some arrangements in the middle of the year, and it's essentially prorated by the number of contract days they have with us. And then if someone should join the district in the middle of the year, which has actually happened a lot, and I actually, and I think it helps with recruitment in the middle of the year especially, because a lot of times they're just trying to, we'll say, "We have family in Oklahoma, and we want to get to Oklahoma," and that helps make, make us, makes us a good choice for them. What we will do is we will give them a prorated amount for the current school year, and then they receive the balance of that when they come back in the fall, which is one way we're going to work on retention as well.
So what recourse do we have moving forward if we give the two thousand and they leave within the year?
They would only receive one, one, one eighty-fifth of it for every day that they work, because that's the length of their contract.
Colin, if you think with me for just a second, because of the way the teachers work their contract and the way you spread their payout over twelve months, they're accruing money for summer checks, and so we haven't paid them what they've worked. And so we're able to recover the prorated portion of that two thousand dollars out of the final payout that we make to them, which would include money that had been accrued to pay them in the summertime.
So even though we paid the two thousand in their first paycheck?
The final paycheck is adjusted when we...
Yes, we're always ahead of our employees who don't work twelve months.
Within about a month, we're, we're ahead of them.
Do we have any language that says you can't come back two years later and get this again?
Yes, in the negotiated contract, well, not two years.
Well, I mean, I mean, like, I can't get it this year, and then next year, not come back, and then come back and...
You cannot have been employed by the district the previous year.
Okay.
So there would be...
So if they have a year lag, they could come back again.
Correct. But that's, that was part of the negotiated piece of it when it was approved.
Other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, safe to assume we have no new business. Perhaps comes up, okay? Raise us to Greg Wade's report.
Dr. Floyd left me down here when... You are all by your own. Appreciate that. Just real quick, Maggie Laws is our community support coordinator out at the base, is trying to arrange for the Unabomber's brother to come and talk at the base, and according to her, he expressed interest in wanting to come and talk to a school at no additional cost. So I don't have all the details right now, but I'll send them to Amber and the rest of you just to see if there might be an interest. He's looking to come in May, towards about, near the end of the school year, so if you're interested in the Unabomber's brother, come in and talk to the school.
And this is good news? If the Unabomber's brother wants to visit the school, that's, that's good.
Well, he's the one that turned him in. And his message is...
I think he talks about the mindset.
Yeah, his message is, "There may not always be a good choice, but there is a right choice." So he was in a difficult place at some point in his life, so he shares that message. Okay, I'll get the details to you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Greg. Board comments or questions? Here it now, proceed. Next meeting is April twentieth at six P.M. in the boardroom right here. Next item is discussing executive session. Do we need?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to go?
Move we go into executive session.
Second. Any discussion on that?